Okay, we're all set to go.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. This is the opening of the January 11th meeting of the Town Planning Board. And as we start all meetings with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, because we're doing this all virtual through Zoom, I'm going to ask that anyone who has a petition pending that they mute their phone until their case is called. And when your case is called, simply unmute. And if you're able to, take your camera off of video if you're able to until your case is called. We are going to be doing this through Zoom. We are also simultaneously broadcasting through Facebook, but questions do not come in through Facebook. Questions would have to come directly to us through Zoom. And at this point, we're going to move on to the agenda for approval of the minutes. The minutes of December 14th were tabled at our last meeting. So I would ask everyone, does anyone have a request for change or modification of the proposed minutes for December 14th? There being none, I would entertain a motion.
A motion made to be approved.
Second. Motion by Fred and second by?
Rich.
Rich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion is, minutes are approved as written. We're now moving on to the minutes of the meeting held on December the 28th. Are there any requests for modification or change of those minutes? There being none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Mike.
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously carried. Minutes are approved. The next thing we're doing is we have been provided with an organizational calendar, a proposed meeting dates and filing deadlines. I would entertain a motion if you desire to make a motion for approval of that calendar, or if there is a reason to discuss, please feel free to speak up now. Okay, then we would entertain a motion for approval of the calendar dates and filing dates. So move.
So move. Second.
Arnie, was that you who was first one?
Yeah.
And second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item for us to consider is appointment of a legal counsel to represent the Town Planning Board. And it's proposed that we reappoint the law firm Baldwin, Sutphen, and Friteski as counsel for the Town Planning Board. Did anyone want to discuss this before we go into a vote?
Move to accept.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
I heard one aye from Rich.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, an aye. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is for appointment of a town engineer. And the proposal is to reappoint Miller Engineering as the planning board town engineer. And anyone, anyone want to discuss this?
So moved.
Second.
Ann made a motion, second by Rich.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye. Motion approved. The last item on our agenda for organizational is for appointment of a clerk for the planning board. And the proposal is to reappoint Lisa Beeman, without whom we would be in desperate shape. So again, Ann?
Yeah.
Okay, your visual went off, Ann. You could turn your visual on if you want.
There's something wrong with the thing here at live recording visual. Start video.
Okay, and, oh, there you go, Ann.
Okay.
And was that second?
Yeah.
Yes.
By Arnie. Motion made by Ann, second by Arnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Lisa.
Thanks. We can't do without Lisa.
Yeah.
Joe, if I could just say something, we are so fortunate to have these three organizations, Lisa, Miller Engineering, and the law firm Baldwin, Sutphen, and Friteski. We would, we would be lost without them. So I'm glad that they're back with us for another year.
Yeah. Thank you.
I agree totally. They significantly help us and assist us throughout all of these petitions, moving through our agenda and getting things done.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep.
Now, the next item on our agenda is an application by CNY Premier Homes, Inc. This is relative to the property located at 7115 East Genesee Street, Fayetteville. This is on for, it's scheduled for a public hearing for both site plan and accessory use permit, all at the same location. Is there someone here on behalf of, John Zeller, you're here on behalf of yourself?
I am, thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to need to have a motion relative to lead agency.
I move the planning board be the lead agency for this project.
Motion, motion by Fred, second by you, Rich?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
This is an unlisted action.
Yes. Thank you, Jamie. We know you're here for your reason. Okay.
See how the rest of the night goes.
Now, before proceeding forward with the public hearing, we normally do seeker. So Jamie, would you be kind enough to lead us through seeker?
I will, thank you. Okay, so here are the questions, and we'll answer them one by one. No or small impact may occur, or a moderate or large impact may occur. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
Nope. No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No. No, or little.
Little, yeah.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
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 Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No. No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Nope.
The proposed action impact public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action impair the quality or character of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources?
No.
No.
Posted action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
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 Having determined no or small impact to each, this board is free to make a resolution of a negative seeker declaration.
And I would entertain a motion from?
So moved.
From Mike Leroy.
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor of negative seeker?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I did have a question of our town engineer. In our, in our last meeting, Doug, you had indicated you were missing one item, and that was a letter relative to stormwater. Am I correct that you did receive such a letter?
I did. Mr. Zeller had Matt Napparella's office send over documentation, and they indicated that they would be installing one small rain garden to accommodate any effects from the rate of runoff on the site. And that looked acceptable to us. And our recommendation is just to incorporate that, John, into the eventual site plan. It was just, you know, the location of it. And there was a swale, and there was a little detail, so that looked fine. Everything looked fine.
Thank you, Doug.
Yep.
That being the case, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ann, and I think Fred, be you on that one, Richard.
That's okay. Can I, can I ask you a question? There's one item, I think, that was still open, maybe it was answered, and that was whether or not this was one lot or two lots.
Two lots.
No, I double-checked with the county, and the county is saying it is absolutely one lot.
Okay, very good. That's all.
So in our, well, we can address that in our resolution. We had talked about making a finding. It's two lots on a tract map, but it's been one tax map for a very long time.
Okay.
So I think for our purposes, we'll treat it as one lot.
That's fine. I just wanted to get that answered before we moved on.
Now, we've got a motion made and second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is hereby opened.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing in the Q and A section.
Then I would entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and second to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is hereby closed. Rather than doing everything together, I would entertain a motion relative to the accessory use permit. That anybody want to make a motion? Could I ask another question? Of course you can, Richard.
Doug, I'm sure you've seen the plans. There's a lot of general comments in the drawings that puts the onus of a lot of different things on the contractor. And I think this was the one. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you had time to go through those. They look like they're pretty standard. And I guess the only other thing is I'd like to ask the applicant who the contractor is, and are those things included in his contract? Or her?
I'm going to be general contracting the project.
Okay, is it a separate, and I don't have it in formality, toss it aside, is it a separate LLC that owns the property and your company?
No, the corporation that owns it, I'm the president of that corporation.
And that's the corporation that'll be doing the construction? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Did anyone else want to have any further discussion before we move on to hear a motion for accessory use? That being the case, we will entertain a motion for either approval or denial of the accessory use application.
I move we approve it.
Second by Arnie. Second by Rich. All in favor? And this would be approval pursuant to specifications provided to the Town Planning Board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I. Okay, accessory use permit is here.
And it was, it's an accessory use permit for a real estate office, to be clear, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Site plan. We would entertain a motion if someone would like to make a motion relative to site plan approval.
I'll make that motion.
Before we make the motion, I do want to note that there was a modification on the Anadaga County Planning Agency resolution of January 6, 2021. Ann, you have that right?
Yeah.
We do.
The applicant must contact the New York State Department of Transportation to coordinate requirements for the existing driveway. And East Genesee Street in Georgia satisfy minor commercial driveway standards. The municipality must ensure any mitigation, as may be determined by the department, is reflected on the project plans prior to, and as a condition of municipal approval.
So if we entertain a motion, it would be subject to the understanding that these requirements of DOT approval would be mandated as part of the site plan approval.
Yes.
Correct. That's correct.
And who is making the motion?
And if I can add to the, if, one more thing, Joe. If we can put the finding that 7115 East Genesee Street, which was formerly two track lots, is one tax map number under the roles of the County of Anadaga, and for purposes of site plan approval and all purposes of the Town of Manlius subdivision regulation, it's one lot. And I think there was one other, we wanted to make a condition, Doug, what was the condition?
That the rain gardens is designed by Napparella Consulting be placed on the final site plan, the swale and the rain garden. I heard, I heard Ann mention all three of those things when she made her motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ann and second by Rich. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Mr. Zeller, you are approved, subject to those conditions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Woodland Hills subdivision that we know as whole glen development. This is a 21 lot subdivision at 5290 through 5320 whole glen. It is on for site plan approval. We have all had an additional two weeks to review the voluminous presentation that we have received. I am personally of the opinion that they have now substantially answered all of the questions in the DEIS. But I would like to open it up to the board. I think we need to move forward, either that yes, they have substantially answered the questions, or no, and tell them exactly what we feel they did not answer. So I'm going to open it up for discussion with the board.
I'll start because I've read it probably less than the rest of you have. I picked it up this last Thursday. And so I, that's, that's, I haven't, I haven't spent a lot of time with it, but I did look at the environmental impact statement items that are the results of our last, I guess, our last meeting, when we looked at the EIS that they came in with. And as with a lot of, a lot of the questions, you know, I'm not sure that there'll be satisfactory answers to the public that live in the area, but they were all addressed in a lot of depth, and I thought about as good as you could do. So I'm going to lean on the rest of you. Hope you did your homework, because I put a look over your shoulder.
Joe, I guess my comment would be, I agree with you that they did answer the questions. I think it needs to be pointed out that at least I don't come to the same conclusion or agreement of what their answer was, but they did answer the questions.
I think you stood in, in seeing what Doug has to say about it.
We have the document, we have it under review, and we anticipate to get you back comments within the next few days.
Mike or Arnie, did either one of you want to be heard on it?
Well, I, I spent an awful lot of time reading it. A lot of it frankly is way above my pay grade, but I'm going to be interested in Doug's comments on some of these things. I also was interested in Ann Masse's comments. And I don't know what her background is, but she certainly has done a lot of very careful research into looking at what was asked and what was answered. And in many cases, it's almost as though you have two trains passing in the middle of the night. The question is asked and answered, but when you get through, you're still saying to yourself, yeah, I heard the answer, but I'm not sure that it addressed the original question. And Doug, I need some help there. The first question I've had, and has been from day one, is the, do we have the capacity at Muirfield to handle the runoff even with this mitigation that they've built into it with the creation of the dam? And then answer my second question is the dam now built to the standards that you feel comfortable with to allow it to sit there on top of those three houses that are right below it?
Those are two of the issues that we're looking at, Arnie, and we hope to get back to you within the next few days.
Okay.
But we're, we're deep into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have a comment?
I, this, Mike Leroy, I still have very similar type questions concerning this whole dam and, and the runoff that Arnie was addressing. Is there, was there any more concern? I know I saw a message today from Lisa about these grinder pumps. Are there, are there any issues there yet, or are we good with that?
I, I think, you know, those are all technical issues, and I know that Doug and his team are very deep in the review of this, and we want to get it right. So, and one thing I do want to point out, we do, we do very loosely use the word dam, but we, but right now, it isn't, we're not really talking about the word dam. So I think if we can agree moving forward, that when we're, when we, when we use the word dam as for this water retention area, it's just, it's just kind of a vernacular, right? It's not, it's not a dam in accordance with DEC. And, and Doug, is that right? And can we agree upon that?
A New York State DEC has indicated that it does not require a dam permit, but it does need to be built to the requirements of a dam.
Okay.
That, so, yeah, I mean, that's it. We're, we're bouncing around those words, but I think everyone's in agreement on that. I think the applicant understands what we're talking about, and we just sort of are loosely using that word dam and the idea of a dam permit versus what's, you know, actually a dam under the DEC are different things.
Okay.
Say that right.
Well, Jamie, I've got another question for you. And this relates, you know, we're considering whether or not the applicant has substantially answered all of the questions. And I kind of want to move forward on that. I understand that Doug has sought other concerns that are still there. And by saying that they've substantially answered the questions, it doesn't necessarily mean that we agree with all of the answers. But that they have, in fact, substantially answered the questions. And that would, if we, if we decide yes on that, that would require you to take additional steps immediately. Could you explain to the board what steps you would be taking if, in fact, they have?
So the next, if, if in fact this board finds that, that the applicant has substantially answered the questions in their DEIS, the questions posed from the positive declaration that was in August, then this board tonight would make a motion to accept this as complete for purposes of directing me to file a notice of completion, which is something official that has to be done in seeker. And then at that point, the public comment period commences, and public comment period has to be at least 30 days. There, we have 60 days to, to hold the public hearing, and then a period of time after that to make our findings.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Are we in a position legally, Jamie, that we can move forward and have a vote as to whether the substantial completion has occurred?
Yes, that vote can, can happen tonight.
Okay. That being the case, based upon what we've all discussed, did anyone want to make a motion relative to whether they have substantially answered all questions or not?
Joe, I'd be happy to make that motion. I have one question, though. We, Doug is still going through the, the book with his team. Are we at a point where we can do this?
Yes.
I believe it appears that they have completed this. I'm just wondering if we need more input from Doug as he reviews this.
We're going to get, we're going to get more input, more information from, from Doug and the public and everyone else. So just the, the next step in the seeker process is to determine that for purposes of sending out the notice of completion, that this is complete for those purposes has been completed by the applicant. And answering those.
I'll make the motion that the, the report has been substantially answered, and that we give direction to Jamie to file her notice.
Second by Fred. Motion made by Richard, second by Fred. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And Ann, you're the only one I didn't hear.
Oh, I said aye.
Okay, then it's unanimous. So Jamie, you are hereby directed to move forward with that? I would like to target the second meeting in February. That is more than 30 days, but it's less than the 60 days. And I'm using the word targeting because we got to determine a proper venue, but the target date is to have a public hearing. And we would need to open up a public hearing and continue the existing public hearing. If our last public hearing on this matter is any indication, I believe we had 33 people speaking relative to this. The firehouse in Manlius was completely full. There was no seating room left. So we got to try to determine a proper venue. It's better if we can do it in person for some reasons, and for COVID reasons, it's, it would be better if we did it through Zoom, virtual. And I think we got to determine what we're going to do. So we've, we've made a yes on substantial completion. We're taking a tentatively target the 16th of February as the next date. And we'll be in touch with the applicant as to whether that's scheduled. Lisa, am I right on the dates?
The 22nd.
Please. There it is.
February 22nd.
Oh, you know, you're right. I'm working at the wrong day of the week.
Last year's calendar.
Hey, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
So at our next meeting, we have, we will have time to send out the appropriate notices. So between now and the next meeting, we'll make that determination.
Okay. Is the applicant okay with what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we're, we're moving on to the next stage then, and we will be in touch with you, hopefully to confirm February 22nd as being the public hearing. Okay?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an application by Wildcat Renewables LLC. This is an initial presentation. It's regarding site plan and a special use permit for a solar array at 7390 Kirkville Road. Do we have someone who's going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I'm, I'm the applicant.
And, and I'm seeing two people side by side with the same name.
That's, we're, we're talented that way.
Okay. So this is an initial presentation. So we just want you to tell us what you're intending to do, how you're intending to do it. And, and we may ask questions before we move on. Okay?
Joe, could I just say something? And you probably know what I'm going to say, but I'll say, I'm going to say it anyway.
Richard, I never know what you're going to say.
Joe, one of the, one of the frustrations that I have in, in moving these planning board meetings forward is that it can, we continually get documentation a day. a day, three hours, four hours prior to a meeting. And it's, it's very frustrating to me because number one, I can't always print it. Number two, I don't have time to review it. And then we have an athlete that comes in that wants to make a presentation on material and items that I haven't seen. And I, I think, and this is just, as I say to Lisa all the time, I'm just one vote, but I think we need to give Lisa some direction on this. Because today we all received at two o'clock, 2:30, whatever time it was, some documentation that in my opinion, and I'm, I'm just one vote, should, we should tell the applicant, we are not going to distribute that and you can't talk about it tonight because we haven't had time to review it. And if happens time and time again, and it's just frustrating. So I'll, I'll stop my speech now.
Yeah, if I could just interject on that, uh, well, I think you're referring to presentation. We had said that we're, we're going to, we're going to screen share that presentation. We send that in just in case there was some type of technical difficulties. It's basically a summary of the, of the company as well as the applicant and the application. So we just put together the presentation, it's just a PowerPoint presentation of what we submitted and we send it in to Lisa. Just to, like I said, in case there was some type of technical issues, that way that all the board would have it and be able to. It wasn't part of the actual application. It was for our presentation tonight.
All right. Well, just so you, just so you know, until Richard said that, I had no idea you sent anything in. Some of us, some of us worked several jobs. And I did not know you sent something in this afternoon. I have not seen any of it. So, uh, the other board members might be in a similar position. Okay? Uh, move forward with your presentation. We want to hear what you're doing and how you're doing it.
Sure. Brian, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and then you can just have me flip whenever you want me to advance the next slide. Okay?
Sure. Yep. My, uh, my internet just timed out there for a second. Um, so you're going to share your screen, Robert?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. While wait till he gets it up here.
Can everybody on the board see that?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Which you said today. Yeah.
It's, um, it's kind of a, the, the funky view, Robert. I think you might be sharing the, your notes page.
Well, that's not it.
That's okay.
Yeah, I'll figure it out. Go ahead, Brian.
All right. Well, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Brian Madigan. I am a project manager with the renewable properties. And I apologize for the confusion there with the late middle of our PowerPoint, but.
Can you speak louder?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Apo- apologies for the, uh, the late middle of our PowerPoint presentation, but, uh, it's as Robert said, a duplicate to what we are sharing on the screen right now. And just wanted to have a paper copy for you guys as we run through this. My name is Brian Madigan and I am the project manager for, uh, the Kirkville Road Solar Project. And I'm joined tonight by Robert Swetala and Kelly Sullivan from Bergman Associates. And, uh, we're here to, uh, to talk with the planning board about our Kirkville Road Solar Project. Next slide. Maybe. Uh, so, uh, I'll, I'll start with, uh, with an overview of, uh, of solar in general and renewable properties as a company. And then move on to, uh, the Kirkville Road Solar Project. Um, and specifics around that and Robert and Kelly will present that information. And, uh, and then we'll conclude. So it should be fairly quick. You know, I can actually see if I can share my screen if.
It's not loading, Brian.
Oh, sorry. Can, can I share mine?
Yep.
Sorry. Here we go. Is that working?
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, a little bit about renewable properties. Uh, we were founded in 2017. Uh, we are a, uh, a sort of solar startup company, but, uh, we are made up of an experienced team and, uh, and group of individuals with, uh, deep expertise and knowledge in the solar realm. Renewable Properties develops finances, owns and operates projects across, uh, the United States. And, uh, we are headquartered in San Francisco with about 20 employees. We tend to focus on smaller scale projects. So, uh, most of, of what we're working with is five megawatts or less. Uh, though we occasionally go up to 20 megawatts. Uh, in our pipeline right now, we have, uh, in excess of 300 megawatts across, uh, six different states. And in operation, we currently have 11 projects, uh, with about 30 megawatts in four different states. Uh, and that includes North Carolina, South Carolina, California, and Minnesota. I'm told that this group is probably pretty well versed on solar as we're not the first application, but, uh, just for a little context about what makes, uh, the town of Manlius in the state of New York, uh, appealing for solar development. Um, basically stems from, uh, the, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act that Governor Cuomo signed into law in 2019, which among many, uh, many goals, set a target of, uh, of establishing six gigawatts of, uh, solar capacity within the state of New York by 2025. So as of August last year, we were at about two and a half megawatts and, um, basically shows that there's still plenty of room in the queue for, uh, additional projects to come online and meet that goal. Um, and this particular, uh, project, the Kirkville Road Solar Project will, uh, be a community solar project. Um, and so in, in the, in that particular program, uh, residents, businesses, municipalities are eligible to buy into a percentage of the project. And, um, each month you receive a credit on your bill, uh, based on the amount of, uh, energy that that project produces as well as the percentage that, uh, that you've bought into. And so this allows, uh, customers who might live in a condo or an apartment building to receive the benefits of clean renewable solar power. If, you know, you can't actually do that on your roof. So, um, and just, uh, a little bit of background in terms of our, uh, site selection and constraints, uh, analysis process that, that we do in terms of a company. And to provide a little context, uh, for how we got to where we are today. It's been a journey. We, we started, uh, probably around this time last year, reaching out to landowners. Um, and conducting our market strategy and entry analysis. Uh, so basically as a state in a market, an energy market has to, uh, make sense from an economic perspective uh, to, to enter into before we, uh, take that next step. And with, uh, the goal to establish, uh, six gigawatts of solar power by 2025. Uh, there, there is a, a strong desire for solar in New York State. And so that's what kind of makes the, the baseline here viable. From an individual site selection and environmental constraints analysis, we take into consideration, uh, several factors. And that includes, uh, we, we try to, or we do avoid, uh, flood zones. Uh, the topography of a site has to be right, uh, in order to maximize the efficiency of the actual array. There has to be viable road infrastructure in, in the area. The site has to be accessible to, uh, an existing roadway. And we try to avoid, uh, any known critical habitat or sensitive species. And there has to be proximity. In this case, along Kirkville Road. Um, and we try to avoid, uh, impacting wetlands, be they Army Corps eligible or New York State DEC eligible. In addition to that, we, oops, sorry. We also, uh, we do an extensive interconnection analysis, uh, with, in this case, National Grid, uh, trying to understand if there is a viable path. Uh, and the project is, uh, cost effective. We also try to work in communities that, uh, that have an established solar zoning, uh, ordinance or standards that allow for the development of, of solar projects. And we have to have a willing landowner, uh, and the economics on that front have to make sense as well. So all of this kind of background is to say that, um, there is a lot of time, energy and effort, uh, put into getting to where we are today, um, and this evening in making this initial presentation to, to the board. Um, and just a few, few, uh, a, a brief overview of kind of the technical aspects that, uh, we frequently get questions on from a public perspective. Which kind of relate to, uh, glare, noise and, uh, traffic kind of, uh, uh, public service impacts. This project, from a glare perspective, we will utilize, uh, single access tracking technology. So the, uh, panels will follow, uh, the, the trip, the path of the sun, um, throughout the day to maximize the efficiency. And, uh, solar panels have come a long way since they were first, uh, designed. And, and so, you know, really the, the panels are designed to absorb the sun, not reflect it. And, um, and we are confident, uh, that, that the, the project will not result in, in glare. From, from a noise perspective, uh, the, the, the tracking technology is very quiet. Uh, the actual project, uh, noise is very quiet. Um, you can expect that, uh, from about 50 feet away, it wouldn't be any louder than your, your refrigerator cycling in your, in your kitchen. So we don't anticipate any, uh, noise impacts to, uh, the neighboring properties. From a traffic standpoint, really the, uh, the potential for impact occurs during the construction phase when the project is being built. Uh, you could expect three to four months, um, perhaps less, since this is a smaller scale project. And, uh, the, once the project is operational, the site is visited very infrequently throughout the year, maybe a maximum of six times for, for regular operations and maintenance type activities, whether that be uh, mowing the site or perhaps washing the panels. There, there really is, uh, no day-to-day traffic as the site is operated remotely. And, uh, and from a health and safety perspective, um, the, the EMF levels, uh, at the perimeter of the solar array are generally no higher, uh, than the natural environment. So, um, that's just a little bit about renewable properties and, uh, I probably told you a bunch of information that you actually already know, so I apologize for that. But, um, at this point, I'll turn it over to, uh, to Robert and Kelly and they will, uh, give you some details, um, specific for our Kirkville Road Solar Project.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, uh, members of the board. My name is Robert Swetala, I'm the principal of Bergman Associates. Uh, I'm located in our Horseheads, New York office with our headquarters in Rochester, New York. Uh, with me also tonight is Kelly Sullivan, project manager for this project. I just want to give a brief overview of the site and the project itself. Uh, the site is located 7390 Kirkville Road on the south side of the site, just east of the, the high school. Uh, the total site area is about 27 acres. Uh, we're only looking to develop just under seven acres. Uh, really on more than northern piece of the parcel. Uh, the southern piece is, contains wooded area as well as a DEC regulated wetland that we'll be avoiding. Uh, and I'll show that in a second here on the next slide with a detailed view of it. Uh, it will be a lease project, so we have a dedicated lease area and leasing agreement with the landowner. Uh, we are looking at, uh, roughly about 1.625 megawatts AC. Uh, so it's generally a smaller system in the community solar realm. Uh, that's about enough to generate power for 327 homes approximately, depending on usage. Uh, as Brian mentioned, we will be have an air connection with National Grid off of Kirkville Road. Uh, the site itself is located in the RA zone, restricted agricultural zone. Uh, solar, this would be considered a large solar photovoltaic energy system, uh, ground mounted. And that is permitted through special use permit and site plan approval in the RA zone. As Brian mentioned, we will be looking to continue the process, a lot of the, the journey and the legwork that we've, uh, had up to this point with a construction around 2021. Brian, can you flip to the next slide, please?
Can I, can I just ask a question about the start date?
Um, sure.
I've been involved in, in some of these solar firms in the town for probably four or five years. And I think we approved the first ones and Anne and Joe, if I'm wrong, jump in and tell me, but I think we approved the first ones back. I'm guessing four or five years ago. And we have approved four more this year. And to my knowledge, Doug, if you, you can correct me too, not a single one has started. And I'm just wondering if you can shed some light on why that is?
Yeah, I, I can't speak, uh, Lisa, on behalf of those other projects. Uh, there's a lot of factors that go into it. Uh, it could be interconnection, uh, agreements with the utility. They're working that out. Uh, it could be landowner, um, finalizing agreements there. It could be, uh, supply, uh, getting the materials. It could be seasonal. Um, I know that a lot of, of companies, as they get close to the winter season, they may decide to push it out to the spring just because of, of not wanting to, to deal with winter construction. So, uh, it could be a factor of all three. Uh, Brian, I will refer to you if you, if you're aware of any, I mean, that's the plan is, is to get moving this summer, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, you know, uh, I guess I would just mention that, that the interconnection component here, uh, we take that aspect very seriously. And so there is a, there is a viable path here with the utility in terms of, uh, the cost of the interconnection upgrades that, that need to take place. And I think sometimes that, uh, other developers, uh, hedge their bets. Um, and push forward with the project application before they understand what those can, uh, connection costs might look like. And, uh, and, and we like to be more conservative and wait until we actually understand that fee and what it's going to cost to upgrade. Um, so, so we do have that information and we are confident that, uh, the project economics overall, uh, look good and, uh, and we are ready to start construction, uh, next summer, provided that, uh, we have a site plan approval.
Okay. One, one other question, and I haven't thought of this before, but this is a long-term lease. And I know a lot of the lease details were redacted, so I couldn't really get a feel for exactly what's going on. And I don't want to get into your business, so I understand why you redacted it. But one of our regulations is that we have security for the dismantling of this at the end of its useful life, whenever that might be, 30 years, 20 years, 25 years, whatever. And since you're leasing it, is there anything in your lease that would help give the town, um, I don't know, security or comfort that you're not going to disappear and leave us with the landowner to dismantle this?
Uh, well, it's actually, um, I think more, uh, the, the better document or vehicle for that, um, that hook. More the the better document or vehicle for that that hook. Is the decommissioning plan and the town's regulations surrounding that, which. Bergman has prepared for us and submitted with the application. So there are provisions in the lease from a landowner standpoint, but but the decommissioning plan and the the bond. That establishes, you know, the 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 fee in today's dollars, along with the end of the life of the project dollars. I think that's the best vehicle to to ensure that that, you know, whether renewable properties exist in five or twenty years. That the project at the end of its useful life is decommissioned appropriately and and the town has the funds available to to do that.
So and I I apologize for getting into the weeds, but you're. You are thinking about posting a bond for the decommissioning. And if the annual payments aren't made, that bond goes away, correct?
Well, that is a question that I I can't answer right now, but I don't think it would, no.
I I believe it would, so I just want to make sure and we'll we'll get into more details as we move forward, but I just want to make sure that. It's decommissioned properly and we're not left with trying to get the landowner to do it. So I'll let you go on. I I've spoken enough, I'll let you move on.
Well, just real quick, and maybe Robert can can correct me, but I believe the bond is posted for the value at the end of the thirty year term, so. So while it's calculated in today's numbers, it's assumed at a two percent escalator. On an annual basis, and so the bond that we set aside money for is is calculated at the end of the project life.
Okay, most bonds that I've been involved with, it's like an insurance policy, you have to make annual payments or put security up. To ensure that the bond can go after something at the end of the day, but we'll get into those details at a later day, but thank you.
Yeah, and we did submit a decommissioning plan that outlines those costs as well as the mechanism. For notifications as well as the vehicle for that security. I think we certainly can can work with the town, but that information is there and and we would be posting some type of charity. As part of the decommissioning requirements that's outlined in your in your ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Just on this slide, real quick, Brian, I just wanted to point out that, as I mentioned earlier, the the almost this whole southern half of the site. Really is is we're not proposing to do any development, that's a wooded area. You can see a little bit of a hatch there just south of our proposed development. That's a D E C regulated wetlands. We've designed the site so that we stay not only out of the D E C wetlands. But also out of the regulated hundred foot buffer that's associated with the D E C wetlands. So we won't have any impact with any type of wetlands, whether it's D E C regulated or Army Corps regulated. If you go to the detailed view, Brian. On the next one, so this is just a really a blow up of the the view of our project area. The site itself today is is pretty much a vacant site, it's wooded, there's some some kind of meadow, grass lawn areas, there's miscellaneous structures. On the property itself, one of the benefits of this site really is the existing buffering that's on the site. As I mentioned, to the south, we're completely buffered, to the west, we're we're buffered. And even to the two residents to the north, there's an existing tree line. That's going to be maintained, that's going to provide some existing buffering. And if you look at any of these or you drive down the road, you can't actually even see, you see the driveway, but you can't see back into the site. Really from behind those houses, because there is a good wooded screen already there, so. We get to use some of that existing screening to to benefit us, both from the surrounding community as well as our neighbors. Our driveway is going to maintain roughly the the same location that there's an existing driveway that heads back into the property. We are going to create a twenty foot wide driveway, that's required per New York State Fire Code. We are using the low impact, low use pervious gravel system that the D E C allows us to use, especially for so. Solar projects, what that does is allow stormwater to essentially infiltrate into the ground, creating, helping with with managed runoff. So that we don't have, say, a traditional impervious area. A small turnaround and then a a little kind of T shaped L shaped turnaround for emergency vehicles. As well as our equipment pad will be located just north of that. We'll have a series of poles for the interconnection, some utility owned, some private owned for for the project. Coming off of Kirkville Road at our point of interconnection. Surrounding the property will be a perimeter fence. Right now, looking at probably a fixed knot game style fence, possibly a chain link. In terms of of what we would use around the perimeter, either one is secure, either one is applicable for electrical codes and and other codes for. For solar projects. And also, we need all the the setbacks, we're greater than fifty feet around all properties. I believe the closest setback on the east side is just over sixty feet, so we have a a pretty good buffer between the. Property lines and the adjacent properties. And again, the only road residence that we have surrounding these properties is the two to our north. And not only they've buffered with the setback, but also with the existing screening that we have there. We got a FAA determination, no hazard back, so we don't need any type of coordination with the FAA. We've also received back from SHIPO no effect letter, so there's no historical or cultural resources for this project. And then according to our records, there's no other solar projects within one mile radius of this site. So that's kind of a general view of of the proposed project, Brian, I think that that's it, and if you just want to wrap up on that.
Thanks, Robert. So just some some key points to consider and and now my face is is right in front of the the. The camera here, so I'm distracted. But. Just to keep in mind. It it's it has been, you know, a journey getting to this stage in terms of our. Our site origination and development process. We do try to only invest in sites that we believe have a clear path to permitting and development. And and that is both in terms of the town as well as the utility perspective. So we are quite cautious in that respect. Solar overall is a very low impact type of development. It doesn't require really any public services to operate. And we believe in are motivated by an urgency around climate change and. We believe that, you know, climate change is a global issue that requires local solutions and. And we hope to be able to be one of the the companies that provides the residents of of Manlius. An opportunity to take part in in clean renewable energy on a on a daily basis, so. Picking away at the the larger, the larger problem, one project at a time, but. Thank you very much for for allowing us the opportunity to present to you tonight, I appreciate your time and thank you.
Hey, Mr. Manigan, one of my concerns, just looking at the area. Is it appears that there are some abandoned trucks left by this homeowner, that by the landowner on the property. And if he dealt with them, that might remove any that type of issue from our consideration of the project. If you might want to pass that along to him. You are muted, we can't hear you. Oh, thank you.
Yes, yes, I'm thinking the, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Yeah, is it sort of in this in this area?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the the existing structures that that are currently on the site as well as. Any trucks and debris that might be there now, all of that would be cleared in order to accommodate the project and we. We've spoken to the landowner about that, you know, very concerned.
Okay, thank you.
I I do have one more question, if I can jump in. Are are you leasing the entire parcel or just part of the parcel?
So right now, we have an option agreement on the entire parcel. Originally, actually, this project was was, we hope to be able to build on the whole thing. But as Robert mentioned, it's it's very wet, so eventually, when we finalize the the project design, we get your approval, it'll own. The lease area will only be for the project and the access, so it'll be pretty limited in in size.
And that's, right now, that's the legal description that's in your lease?
Well, no, the the legal description in the lease is probably the whole parcel right now, because it's an option. So we haven't yet defined, Robert's team is actually helping us with the survey of the parcel and. Will then use that description to create the actual project lease area description.
Okay, that's something I'd be interested in seeing.
I have questions for you, Robert. Or Brian, rather, the Hellford Lane folks that live on the southern end of your property. Will they even be able to see the solar array once it's up?
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't believe so, just because of the the, it actually, it's at the bottom of the screen that's up right now, you can't see the the dwellings. And and it's not much of a topography change across there. So it's not like that they are going to be seeing this up on a hill or anything like that, if anything, it it kind of slopes down in towards with that little stream channel. So from a visibility standpoint, that neighborhood to the south of us should not have any visibility. That's a pretty dense wooded area before you get to our project area. That even in the wintertime is is gonna affect any type of visibility to our site, and again, there's not a topography enough, a topography change. That would warrant any type of, you know, seen above the trees or or anything like that.
Okay, second question, I think this one sure is Robert. How do you get assessed for this? That's that's going to be a cost every year in terms of the assessed value of the project. How do you know in advance what it's going to cost when you're doing your business plan?
Well, that probably would be more for Brian than me as the engineer, but I I can just say that I, you know, it it's obviously up to the assessor. Your your assessor to assess the value of these, and some of my other projects that we've done across New York State. Because it's been relatively new, that's been a somewhat of a challenge for assessors to 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 put any value to these. Because there's not a whole lot of precedence out there or or data, so obviously. You know, the client, the applicant has a business model in terms of cost. As well as, you know, soft costs associated with easements and 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 leases and stuff like that, so. That goes along with whatever output that's there, as well as any type of taxes, pilots, whatever. Whatever that may be, whatever that mechanism, Brian, I'm sure you can you can say that that certainly has been looked at and then you guys work through that as financial models when you're when you're looking at these projects.
Yeah, that's correct, and you know, to 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 be transparent. I I would not be able to provide you at this time more detail than Robert already has. I'm more of the permitting person rather than an economics person, so I will. I will check with our our finance team to see how best and appropriate to answer that question in more detail.
Okay, I I ask because it's obviously a benefit to the town. And it's one of the reasons that we approve you taking this enormous piece of land. And taking it off the tax or taking it off the development rules for the next twenty years. So we'd like to know that you're getting a good deal in terms of the assessed value and we're getting a good return on the fact that we've let you use the land.
Understood, I I think also, as Robert mentioned, you know, I think that's partly that the assessor's kind of role to. To adjudicate, but I will, to the best of my ability, as a as a company standpoint, answer. Get a little more detail to answer that question.
Okay, and the last thing is, for those of us who took the time to read your proposal, and it was very well done, by the way. You don't have to read the PowerPoints to us. We can read them, and it's one of the things they taught me a long time ago in school. If you're going to show a PowerPoint, show it, don't read it to the people, because they've already read it at about five times the speed that you can talk it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I do have a question for our town engineer. Doug, do you have you have all the information that you think you need before we move forward with this?
I've been in contact with Kelly over the last couple of weeks, so there are some things that I know are absent, but Kelly and I. Have been working through that, and I will go through this in a little bit more detail. The other thing that you may look at here is, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Manigan several months ago, is. We are familiar with solar in our town, we currently have about fourteen megawatts that we are looking at from a community standpoint also. But if you recall, our Taft Road solar that we recently permitted last fall was also engineered by Bergman. The report I have in front of me looks starkly different from the one that we saw from the other Bergman group. But I'm sure that, you know, as Kelly and I move through this, you know, we can, we can get through those those issues in the next week or two.
Okay.
And I think I mentioned to both Kelly and Mr. Manigan, I think it was, was it Drayson? Out of the Rochester office that had worked with us. And actually, I think that that went quite smoothly there.
Yes, sir.
So. I just wanted to address Doug's concern there, we actually had been working with Lobella Associates, but we switched over to to Bergman. So 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 Drauzen is with Lobella, but but Robert and Kelly are with Bergman, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Proposal specifically in in front of the town or or not, but. That might be the confusion.
Okay.
Yeah, and Doug, I can just add to the SWP reports, the the two that came in previously that I think you looked at, they were for a different. Different applicant and we kind of took them over on behalf of the applicant, so that's why they probably looked a little bit different, because they had a different. Different format, different philosophy for what they wanted to see with their SWP, so if there are a little bit different methodologies, that 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 was probably the reason why.
Okay, perfect. And I'll continue to work through, Kelly, Robert.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, good.
Doug, should I presume then that we were not in a position to move forward with the open hearing? And the special use permit and site plan at this point?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, then we're going to postpone this until a later date, depending on when we are advised by the town engineer. That he believes he substantially has what he needs. Okay?
I I did have one question.
Makes sense.
If if I if I could, if you don't mind. And this might be a question for the attorney, in terms of, and maybe we're getting a little far ahead, but just kind of looking ahead for seeker. We did submit that the long form. Assuming it's going to be a type one, but because of our, we won't be disturbing or changing more than really about seven acres. I I thought it might go under the threshold of a of a uncoordinated review and listed, I'm sorry, enlisted action. But I wasn't sure, and I didn't see anything in the ordinance, if if it's specifically outlined solar as a type one, so just looking for some guidance on that one. Because this question I had.
I I'll take a look at that, it is probably not a type one.
Okay.
Great, I would I would concur with that, Jamie.
Yeah, we're not in an ag district, or there's no historical stuff that would lower that threshold down, so. But we did send in the long form, just, you know, just to to provide that information, but I just, I I wanted to double check that for my own reference.
I think traditionally, right, the ground disturbance is minimal, so.
Correct, yeah, really, we'll have the.
That drives a lot of it.
Yeah, there'll be post driven polls, so should be very, very minimal.
We don't have anything in our ordinance that specifically talks about the about solar being type one, but we're happy to look at your long form.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Manigan, you had your hand. Mr. Manigan, you had your hand up again. Did you want to add something else?
I was going to ask if we needed to to make the the seeker, I forget what it's called exactly, but initiate the public review process for Seeker, but it sounds like we might not because it might not be a type one.
Probably not. Pretty sure it's not.
Okay, that being the case, we're going to adjourn this indefinitely until we hear back from the town engineer that we're in a position to put it on for hearings relative to the special use permit and site plan.
Sure. Okay, maybe you and I can touch base later this weekend or some of the issues again.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you. We have nothing else on our calendar for other business. Is that a motion, Craig?
That was indeed.
Second.
Is that Richard who second?
Second, yeah.
Motion made in second, all in favor.
All right.
All right, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Everyone, thank you.
Good night now.
Thanks, Lee.